I might put you in detention.
Hey, I'm entertaining the crowd.
You're entertaining all right. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Brian Hemmings.
Let us pray. Our holy Father, we are so thankful for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord, for rest on last night. We thank you, Father, for your promises. We thank you for your word. We thank you, Lord God, for every good and perfect gift from above. We pray, oh, Lord God, for those who serve others. We ask you, Lord God, to help those who are hurting, Father, those who are sad, those who are depressed. We ask you, Lord God, to protect us this day. Father, we pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding of the things for the people we serve. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Do you please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammonds?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Counsel, I'd like to need a motion to approve the amendments of the April 19th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Beckett. Any questions about the amendments of the last meeting? Counsel, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience about today's agenda? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any ceremonial matters?
Not this time.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 114-5 emergency medical funding, service charge on utility bills, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds to purchase GPS equipment for the use within the engineering department at a cost of $25,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond fund, final reading.
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to grant an easement to the United States of America, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I've got one. I know last meeting that we had some questions about this, on whether or not this easement was going to affect Barksdale Federal Credit Union right there or any other businesses along there. Has that been resolved?
I know of no effect that it would have on existing businesses.
Okay, I knew that we had a question about how far it was going to come up with the entrance of Barksdale's where you turn into their right there.
It should not affect any existing rights-of-way points of entry or exit for any existing business.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Councilman Williams.
I'm sorry. I didn't see it pop up yet. Oh, it's already done, yeah. Number four? Oh, let's hold it one second. Y'all just bear with us for a minute if you don't mind.
Haven't seen Brad move that fast since high school.
I know.
And he was slow in high school.
Chief, you got a special guest today?
Y'all, this is Ms. Gaila, who's been with us for 37 years. She's truly a legend, the Bossier City Fire Department and the mayor. And y'all, it's a huge honor, and I thank y'all for doing this for.
Why isn't her Steve up there?
We need Steve.
Yeah, because he's been here about that long too, it seems like.
She looks like she's about ready to cut E. Brad.
I hope he got everything done that he needed done, because I don't think he's going to get anything anymore.
We made all this plan with the council, the mayor, Phyllis, and leave it to the marshals to screw it up and take down.
Well, Counsel, I'd like to read a proclamation to Ms. Gaila, if I can. Whereas Gaila Ford is beloved and trusted secretary to the fire chief in the face of Bossier City for Fire Department, for the Fire Department Office. Gaila began working at the city of Bossier on February 5th, 1985, as an office manager and began secretary to the fire chief on January 16th, 1990, and is the most senior employee of the Bossier City Department. And whereas Gaila has faithfully served the men and women of Bossier City Fire Department for over 37 years and has played a role in hiring of the majority of the employees and is known for having all the answers. And whereas Gaila is known for her caring and kindness to all, her calm demeanor and her compassion for others. Also, she is also known as the receipt police and her disdain for any employees who pay taxes on departmental purchases. I'll get it out sooner or later. Whereas Gaila promised only five years to Chief Sagon as his secretary, but has given him 11 years. Whereas Gaila's final day with the Bossier City Fire Department will be Thursday, May 5th, 2022, due her legacy will live on. Now, therefore, I, Thomas H. Chandler, Mayor of the city of Bossier City, do here proclaim Thursday, May 5th, 2022, as Gaila Ford Day.
Gaila, we want to thank you for all your time and your service. And of course, that's all we hear about is Gaila retiring, Gaila retiring. And we appreciate it too. So we have a good retirement.
I appreciate it. It's been great, and the 11 years that I just served with Brad has been the easiest of the whole time. So I appreciate you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Now, number four.
Now everybody knows why we stopped there for a minute. We apologize.
Adopting ordinance to replace high-service pump number nine for Bossier's water treatment facility at a cost of $86,000 to come from the Water Capital and Continuity Fund, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
No business.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Stephen Pinkley, bayou window intent. Location, Lily Street, just north of Rossi Lee Drive, Section 13, Township 17, North Range 13 West, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from RA residential agriculture to B3 general business on a certain tract of land being .651 acres more or less.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Red River Brewing Company, location 310 Mansfield Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high- and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Maztec Network Solutions, location 900 Central Park Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for a 31-foot small cell tower.
So moved.
Second.
I had a few calls in my district. Of course, I talked to Carla Ollie, and she sent me a nice little picture that I had to distribute. But everybody's happy with it. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend ordinance 92 of 2020 to cover construction costs for the Highway 71 street lighting project, Phase II project, for a total of $681,782 to come from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance allocating $50,000 for the procurement and implementation of an enhanced backflow prevention and cross-connection control system using the Parkway Capital Project Fund to cover all project costs, first reading.
So moved. Second. Ben, have you talked to anybody else about that? I know me and you talked about it. You want to?
I've talked to the administration about it.
Counsel, have y'all got any questions about? You may give us a quick overview if you can.
I do.
So we are required by the Louisiana Department of Health to implement a more robust backflow prevention and cross-contamination program. This $50,000 is a one-time ask. That's to buy some software. And I had a contract in that fact sheet that shows what those costs are. This will go mostly to postage. So we're going to have to mail information out to all of the customers, make sure everybody's aware. If you have a backflow preventer, these are the things you need to do to make sure it's in compliance with the city's ordinances, which are already there. It already requires that. But LDH is asking the city to have firm black-and-white records on exactly what was, when these certifications are being done. Are they being contacted and things like that? So this money is to implement that program. Moving forward, the customers that have backflow preventers will have to pay a fee to have that certified. And those costs will continue this program from here on out.
So we're talking about anybody that's got a sprinkler system with a backflow preventer on it?
That's correct.
What will? How will we be able to charge people these fees? Is it going to be on their water bill?
No, sir. When, we will notify them through this system. They will have to contract with a plumber or a licensed professional capable of inspecting and certifying their backflow preventers. And we'll have a portal. And part of them completing that application will be a $12.50 fee to get that completed.
Ben, is this to all the people in the parish who are serving water?
Yes, sir. Everyone on our water system.
How often we have to certify?
Once a year.
Once a year.
So it's just a $12.00 fee once a year?
Well, it's $12.50 fee to the city once a year, and then whatever it costs to have a plumber or professional certify that.
We know what plumbers cost. Saying, "We know what plumbers cost."
Know, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to declare the completion of the East Texas Industrial Airlines Sewer Rehabilitation Project by Horseshoe Construction, Inc., at a total construction cost of $1,095,169, including change order number one, and to amend ordinance 71 of 2020, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the sewer capital and contingency fund, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to appropriate funds for improvements to the lateral B1 drainage canal for a total of $35,000 to come from the sales tax capital improvement fund and to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Nixon Engineering Solutions, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance amending ordinance 31 of 2021, increasing the appropriating amount by $400,000 using the American Rescue Plan Act grant to extend the nanofiltration pilot study, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a few questions. I guess Ben might be the best person to answer. How long have we been doing this study already?
We've been at it over a year now.
And how much have we already spent studying it?
I don't have that number right in front of me. I want to say 300 and something thousand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. What more do we need to try to find that we haven't already found out in a year and a half, two years, that we've been studying it?
Great question. I put some information there in front of you. It looks like this, and it's an excerpt from a presentation that we've been using to update the council, or really the administration, on our efforts there. And it's a lot of technical data. I'm going to try to go quick and consolidate it. But the first page of that, and Chris, just kind of goes to your question, what are we doing? And this particular graph shows kind of the initial study. And what you're looking on here, you'll see TOC, that's total organic content, and then DOC, that's dissolved organic content. And we're taking those readings from raw water all the way through the pilot. And you can see where it says filtrate, and you see ND in there. That means non-detect. So when we were running our water through the membranes that we had out there, spiral-wound nano-filter, we were getting non-detect organics, which is exactly what we were hoping to see. So the initial study was very favorable to using nanofiltration. So the next slide, Chris, and counsel, is kind of an overview of exactly what we're trying to accomplish by this effort. And concentrate on the graph there on your right side of the page. And what you see, that sort of orange line decreasing over time, that is the chlorine, the residual chlorine in Bossier's water over a 15-day period. And so what we're doing is taking this filtrate coming out of the nano-filter, and we're sampling it for disinfectant byproducts over that time period. And at no point over that 15-day period did we have any disinfectant byproducts that exceeded the MCL, what they call the maximum contaminant level. So those DBPs, being the gray bar and the blue bar, you can see there, the gray bar being HA5s, and the maximum contaminant level on those would be 60. So we're hovering just slightly above 35 at our peak time in there. And then the blue bar being TTHMs, those have to be below 80, and we're hovering around half of that. So we're showing that by blending this water, we took a 75%, 25% blend, so 75% of what was coming out of the pilot, blended that with 25% of our traditionally filtered water, we were capable of meeting our disinfectant byproducts on chlorine only. And the chlorine residual stayed above the maximum contaminant level for more than 15 days. That's a very long time to have that in there. So very happy about that result. So check, check, we're doing good. Here's where the problem comes in on the next page. So as we continued to study, you can see what we're calling pre-filter screens with manganese fowling. And this was a phenomenon we were not expecting as part of the pilot. So you see all that black debris. You've got four filters there that are completely clogged up and one that's white. And what was happening is, is this material is getting into that spiral-wound NF membrane. It's requiring more pressure. All that particulate gets caught in the fabric, requires more pressure, and the fabric blows. It no longer filters, and you're getting, you know, organics through those membranes. And so our ask here is to help understand what's causing this and how do we eliminate that moving forward? Because it was very unanticipated. That's why you do pilots. Had we not gone through this process and thought, hey, everything looks great, and you get a full-scale unit out here and you're dealing with this, it'd be a multimillion-dollar problem. So we've begun that effort. You can kind of see the line graph here. And what we're trying to show is where is the manganese coming from? Because this isn't an issue that we normally have with Bossier's water. We don't deal with manganese. Where's it coming from? So the line graph there, again, on your right, you can kind of see it come down and then goes back up. So you're looking at pre UF membrane, so pre-membranes, and those are the existing membranes we have. Then you have the UF permeate, which is the existing membranes that we have out on site. And then you get the pilot feed, and you see a little spike in manganese there. And that's what we're trying to determine, what is causing that spike, okay? So the next sheet shows some conclusions that we've come. And I've highlighted a couple boxes, but pay attention to the box there in yellow with the red around it that's on the bottom left. And so you can see the numbers, pre UF membrane, and these are manganese levels. You can see it down to the 100th, .035 and .029. And then post UF membrane, again, these are the membranes that exist out there. They escalate quite dramatically. And what we believe that's occurring is when those existing UF membranes go into a cleaning cycle, we use chemicals to clean them. And that's oxidizing this manganese, which is becoming problematic for a NF membrane to filter out. So the intent of this next phase, should the council appropriate money towards it, would be to study that, okay? So take a look at what is creating the manganese issue. We think we have two ways of handling it. One would be in the settling basins, existing settling basins out there. We want to run a study that will provide what we're calling enhanced coagulation to get the manganese out before it ever hits the filter. The other is to look at some processes prior to going into the NF membrane that would remove that manganese. So you have those two tracks. And then the other issue we're fighting is this compromise of the NF membrane. So we talked about those higher pressures, and those pressures are what ruptured the membrane and got all the organics through. We want to study some different membranes that are tighter and stronger so that that won't happen. So we realize it's a hard ask. This is not something that anybody in the state of Louisiana is doing. We feel passionate about it, but ultimately it takes money to continue down it. The reason we're doing it is because we feel long-term for Bossier, it's going to be best to get off chloraminated water and onto free-chlorine water. And to do that, we have to have another mechanism in our process. So that, in a nutshell, is a whole bunch of time and energy, as simply as I can condense it, you know, to show the council what's going on.
So if we ever get to the day to where we decide we want to move to a free-chlorine system, what is the cost going to be to update to that nanofiltration system?
Great question, and I can't answer that at this point. That's part of what we're looking at doing in this pilot, is to come up with those capital costs. What type of infrastructure would be required? And ultimately, what is that going to cost the community to implement that?
And I may be completely off-base, so I'd like you to correct me if I am. So if we move to this system, to truly get the best water that this nanofiltration system will produce, you would almost have to go to the treatment facility with a spigot at the end of the production line and get a glass of water, because after it leaves there, it travels all over Bossier City to every house and business through some 70-year-old pipes, picking contaminants up on the way. Would we be better served taking American Rescue Plan money, which is probably only going to happen once in our lifetime, and invest that into underground infrastructure? Because neighbors across this river have a consent decree forcing them to update theirs. And while we're not even close to that, would it be better if we were a little proactive and said, maybe we should take this money and update underground infrastructure?
Great question, Chris. And I try not, ultimately, how the money is allocated is up to, you know, the administration and the council to do that. So I can speak to the age of the lines and how this may help. What we see currently using chloraminated water is what they call nitrification in the lines. That's the issue we fight all the time. It's why we have to have an annual chlorine cleanse burn, where we swap the system over to chlorine. We clean out all of that nitrification, and then we go back to chloramines. A chlorine-only system, you would never have to do that again. So that's the benefit, that you get rid of that nitrification. You stay very consistent on your chlorine levels and things of that nature. So that's the desire. So we're requesting a portion of that American Rescue Plan funds to continue the study. We feel that it's, we wouldn't put it before the council. We didn't feel like it was a worthwhile endeavor. But ultimately, when it comes down to this is how much it's going to cost to implement a system like this, we'll be back here again talking about that. So whether a nanofilter is good today or down the road at some point in the future, understanding what Bossier's options are, to continue to be ahead, you know, not to get behind, like you mentioned, you know, our neighbors across the street, but to continue to be on the cutting edge of the technology out there, you have to do stuff like this. So we're fortunate in Bossier. You guys have allocated a lot of resources to let us do that. I wish, Chris, I wasn't up here telling you, man, this pilot's... I wish, Chris, I wasn't up here telling you, man, this pilot's, it's dragging on, and I wish I had better news for you. But the only way we get to that is to continue that effort and look at it. And most of that cost is for membranes and membrane manufacturers and the sampling and everything else that goes involved in that. So I understand it's a hard ask, you know, so I appreciate the questions. And if it's something that ultimately we can't get consensus from the council on, so be it. But we, we think it's important for the city to continue moving forward with it.
Ben, before we started this, didn't LDH want to ask us to do this project? Or they wanted us to do it, or?
They're certainly in support of it. I won't, there's no mandate by LDH to do it. You know, we do get seemingly every year new and more stringent regulations on water treatment and the quality of the water. And it's, you know, it's the surface water system that's the most difficult to treat. We're not groundwater. You know, so these are things that we try, we try to stay ahead of. And it's, we're not in the same, we're not in a boat by ourselves. All the surface water systems in the state really are dealing with these. We're just a little out in front.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask, is anyone here could speak on the balance of the, of that, of that fund? Anyone here could do that? She could, okay. It is a grant, so just curious about that.
We've received $6 million in 2021, and we expect to receive the balance in 2022. And this will be the first expenditure for the grant.
Okay, thank you so much.
Do we have any idea what the balance, I mean, the next one that we receive, how much is it going to be?
It'll be right around 13.
Okay. And Mr. Rockenbach, ManShack has been in place on this project previously.
Yes, sir.
So how much fee have you guys generated? This, this one is $25,000, so to date, how much have you generated? Do you know?
I should have been better prepared for that answer, but I don't have it in my back pocket. I can by next meeting, Councilman Darby.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, if I could, I mean, is there any way we can make a motion and table this till, for two weeks?
You can make a motion to continue it for two weeks.
To continue it for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Ben, what will that do to y'all? Are you waiting on the filters, or?
We just won't. I mean, we're waiting to get this approved or not approved before we start spending any money towards extending it, so.
So it won't hurt, that won't hurt nothing going forward?
No, sir.
We got a motion.
Mr. Hammond, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Hammond, a second by Mr. Smith, to continue for two weeks.
What's the date of our next council meeting?
It is going to be on, I think, May 19th, but let me verify that.
May the 19th?
May the 17th, I'm sorry.
Okay, if we can continue it to May 17th.
Oh, I got a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Thought I already asked the audience. Do we get anybody from the audience that'd like to talk on this?
On the continue, you've got to ask for the continue if there's any discussion from the continuums.
We have, we're going to continue this, like I said, anybody have anything to say? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with ManShack Consulting Group, Inc. to provide engineering services for the city of Bojor City, first reading.
So, a second.
Mr. President, I have a couple of things I'd like to ask on this ordinance. The amendment to the 3P was about $150,000 previously. And that, that was what we agreed to. And this ordinance is a little different, so I'm curious about that. But before I go into my thoughts, I want to say that when I look at the history of Mr. Rockenbach and his capacity, he, he has been the most credible, professional, hands-on engineer that I've had the privilege of working with in the city. I think, I think you've served the city well. Without any reservation, I say that. But that being said, let's talk about the people money. Mr. Mayor, you, you agreed that we should extend this contract. To extend it, you included $12,000 per month versus the latter one that was less than that. So why, why is it increase $8,000 per month?
It's gone from 20 to 12, from 12.5 to 20, okay. Not only are we getting, we just had one, one engineer. Now we're getting two engineers and the whole ManShack services for that.
So you're paying for two engineers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And, and see, back, back when we had Hudson working, we put that 12.5 for what he was making a year.
Okay.
Okay? And, and we was, we was, you know, saving money then. And now we're going to have two engineers, and we're still, we're still saving even more money.
Okay. So, so the justification for the increase is a second engineer?
Yes, sir. Plus the, plus ManShack services, yes, sir.
Okay. Was, was that number negotiated? With ManShack?
We had meetings with, we had meetings with ManShack, yes, we did.
So how did the number 20,000 per month resonate? What?
Really, we negotiated that, negotiated it down, so we got it down to 20, yes, sir.
So what was it before?
Charles, well, I can't remember the number before.
Well, we talked about, and just discussions with ManShack, they were going to build certain rates for certain services and certain personnel. The, the problem that the mayor had and, you know, it left it somewhat open-ended, which makes it hard to know what to budget for engineering services come budget time. So we discussed that between the administration and ManShack, and we came to the number that for Ben Services and Clinton Services, plus all the ManShack support services that back that up, we felt that $20,000 a month or $240,000 a year as a contract rate was fair to the city.
Okay. For, for three years, so it equals $720,000 for those three years that we will be under Mr. Rockenbach's leadership in the Engineering Department. So would the scope of your work be any different?
Let me answer some of these questions, Councilman Darby. You're correct. Our initial contract was based on the salary of the previous engineer. And, and the intent was to resume those responsibilities in accordance with the city's charter. So you're already, the city's already paying ManShack to manage the Triple P, of which I'm involved, and you get 40 hours of my time, whether, you know, it's more than 40, frankly. But you're paying for 40 hours of my time in the Triple P, which includes working in the Engineering Department. My time is, is already lumped into that. What we're looking at here is a, a reasonable rate to have Clinton Patrick involved in there. He's the day-to-day eyes and ears in the Engineering Department. He answers to me, and we work together. But that costs us money to, to put him in there. And again, he's working 40-plus hours a week in that role. So the way we envision this, our contract at $20,000 isn't structured based on what would you, you would consider a standard engineering fee rate. It's less than that. You look at the rates we could charge myself and Clinton for, it would be well over $240,000 a year for that, for that work. We love working in Bojor. We see it as part of the whole picture. And we enjoy working for the administration and the council there. And so the vision for this contract is to use that to supplement what we're already doing. So you have Clinton, Patrick, working in there, myself. And, and the delta would be used to support our construction administration efforts. So right now, you have myself and Clinton and two inspectors to manage 150 sometimes. You know, right now, we're hovering around $130 million worth of work. And that becomes difficult when the expectation is perfection. So our desire is to use some of that contract amount to bring in a little bit more resources associated with managing the construction administration efforts in the Engineering Department. So that's the intent. Again, we understand it's unusual, it's, it's, it's an ask. But as you know, I get calls from the administration and the council all day long.
And all night, Ben.
All night. And we're out here, and we're very reactive. We've got a little sign over here, can we move it away from the tree? We've got this drain over here. And what we don't have is the ability to stand back and look at the problems that are facing this community and really develop good solutions for transportation and drainage and water and sewer. And, and that's because we're in this perpetual reactive mode. My hope, my vision is that, that, that little bit of delta in that fee will allow us to put some of that reactive stuff into the hands of people to be very responsive and to allow us to start executing a greater vision for the city.
Yep, thank you for that.
I understand what you're, what you're saying, Ben, that, you know, you get calls from us. And, you know, we call you because we don't have a city engineer that is an employee of the city of Bojor.
I complain.
No, no, I know, I know you're not complaining. I just, I just look at it, and I would not be doing my due diligence as an elected official that my constituents elected me to ask these questions, that appropriating the money to pay y'all more when we have city employees that are quitting because we don't pay enough, that I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, that if you would have come to us and asked for more money for a, you know, you had that right to change that when y'all were back doing the budget, that you could have changed the line item and came back to the council with more money, that, you know, we could have hired a city engineer and kept ManShack on as a consulting basis, because a city engineer can't, I mean, there's no way a city, one person can handle everything that you're doing. There's just, there's just no way to do that. I've got just one, one difficult question. So the $12,500 that, that ManShack is billing a month, that is the only thing that y'all bill for on that end?
I don't know that I understand the nature of the question.
But y'all, y'all bill $12,500 a month for the original contract that the city of Bojor has with ManShack?
We were billing $12,500 a month until such point as our contract expired. And then we began billing at a hourly rate that at least met our cost for keeping our employees in that position.
So that, that's what on, on March the 15th of '22, billing out 160 billable hours at 95.56 an hour, comes out to $15,288.85, that would be on top of additional.
No, that's, that would be exactly what was billed to manage the Engineering Department. All you're paying for is Clinton's hours. And he's definitely worth more than $95 an hour.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with you, and I know what engineers make. I'm not going to disagree with you on that.
Mr. President, if I may, I have a few questions as well. The ordinance as written says that ManShack, through its designated representative Benjamin Rochenbach, will serve as the interim head of the city's Engineering Department. And so it doesn't mention Clinton in the ordinance. And so that's, that's, that's one where my problem is, is we have, we're going to be appointing ManShack and Ben, and we're going to subsidize ManShack's business to allow another employee to help. And I'm not saying he's not worth the money. I'm just saying that if the city, back when Mr. Hudson worked here and every city engineer previously, we haven't had a need for two department heads in that department. Maybe, maybe, maybe the city's grown, and we do now, and we need to, if we ever get around to a charter commission, maybe we, that can be something we can add into the city's charter for two department heads. But currently, our charter says one engineer. And for, and it's $20,000 a month, $240,000 a year. My, my, my question to you, Mr. Mayor, you use the word interim in here. However, it is for November 2021 through May of 2024. And I see no language in here that allows the city, should it decide to hire its own engineer, or should it decide to move in another direction to get out of this contract until May of 2024? So for the next three years, there's, there's, there's no way that this, we're, we're bound to this. We can't, we can't change our minds. There's no, there's no way, so there's, there's no way out. So if we choose to go back to paying a city engineer $151,000 or $50,000, whatever it is, salary and benefits, we couldn't do that, because we're bound to this. And I'm, I'm curious about the word interim. I think it would only be fair to ManShack if this is the horse that you're going to ride on, that you commit to them through the end of your term. And, and, I mean, it's not fair to them to, you're not going to find an, an engineering company or engineer in May of 2024 entering your last year of your term to commit with politics at play. So in my opinion, there needs to be a way out for the city if you change your mind, or you just need to commit to ManShack through June of 2025.
May I speak now? During my campaign, I did push to get my own city engineer. Me and my people in my office have gone through six people since last May. We thought we had each one hired. Each one, for some reason or other, backed out. It was really seven, to tell you the truth. We have over $105 million worth of contracts out there right now. We do, Bojor City is growing so much right now that we do need another engineer, all right? For the price that we're putting.
Do you have some data to back that up? That one engineer could not handle this?
Do you want to do it yourself, sir?
Can I, can I say something?
No, I'm just asking if there's data to back that up.
I've been here a long time, you know, Mayor, not to interrupt you, but we did have two engineers at one time, okay? One of them dropped off. And when you have one engineer, let me tell you, you won't get nothing done. And when I say that, Chris, I'm telling you the truth. It's hard for one guy to, to get out and do all the things these guys do. Now, we didn't have a road program. It's like, Mark, I need to get this done. Well, we might get that done next year sometime. Now, we're going to schedule every year, we're doing our roads, our streets and roads. And like I said, like when I spoke up, yeah, I called Ben and Clinton regularly. I'm sure they get tired of hearing from me. But you won't find two, two better, more people that's dedicated to their job and dedicated to this city, Ben's from Bojor.
And I, and I don't denote that, and I, me and Ben have had a meeting one-on-one with each other. And so nothing I'm saying, I think, should come off as a shock, because we, we were able to be very candid. My, 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 my last question to you, Mr. Mayor, is if you, if you're, if you've chosen to go the route of privatization, did you reach out to other engineering firms to see what they could offer Bojor City and what that price would be? Or do we not shop that either?
Well, I'm still looking for my city engineer. And I believe, no, I did not search, I did not shop that, no, sir. But they're, they're already, ManShack, But they're, they're already, Mancheck, how many times everybody call these guys a, a week? And they're very responsive, they're, they're on the job any time of day.
To make it fair, that's their job.
Yes, sir. But, you know, that, that is their job, and they do their job quite well, sir. And I, I believe, why should we go to try to find somebody else when they're already doing their job?
But it's not your money, it's not-
No, sir, it's not my money, but I'm controlling the-
It's these people's money.
Yeah.
And you do, you, you owe the people a, a, you owe them to make sure that we are being good stewards of their money.
So you're saying, man, okay, I better, I better stop talking.
Okay, Chris, um-
And we are too, because, I mean, we're, so many water lines run, sewer lines run. We got things happening that we have never have happened before.
Councilor Madge, before you speak, you mentioned the charter, Chris. And the charter does allow for the city engineer to have a, an assistant city engineer. It's not a dual department head. Clinton is serving under me as the interim assistant city engineer. And that was something that I thought, for the benefit of the city, of which I care about deeply, that it only made sense to have somebody in there, because I'm already very involved in other, you know, infrastructure needs of, of the city. And it's worked well, and it is by charter. The way that is written in, in this ordinance is that, you know, as set forth in Chapter Nine Engineering Department of the City Charter. So that's why it's set that way. You know, I, I can't argue to, you know, why not go out to the private market and, you know, solicit other quotes coming in? Uh, but, you know, we try hard to, to, to inject an immense amount of value in what we do. It's very important to us. And you can go look, but you will never find somebody more passionate about this city's infrastructure than I am. I promise you.
And, and I believe that, I truly do. Um, and, and, and I echo Mr. Darby. You are the utmost professional, and I've enjoyed every minute that we've gotten to work together and get to know each other on a personal level. This is just me doing my job as well. And so, I, I do feel like that we, we ought to take this, if we're gonna go the route of a private company, and see what Bojor companies can offer us. I also think that, Ma- Mayor Chandler, you just said you're still looking for an engineer, yet there's no exit clause for this, and this ordinance is written. So, I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to include some language that should the city decide to cancel this contract within thirty days, that we have that ability to do so.
Ben, what other departments did you manage? And it was property standards. I mean, they work for you, you got some, uh, uh, other people in there that, it's not just him and Clinton. It's, it's the whole, whole shebang, you know? He deals with GIS a lot, along with Carlotta.
I'm not saying they're not worth every penny that we're offering to give them, but it's a, it's a sixty-six percent increase. And we're not giving a sixty-six, sixty-six percent increase to any other city employee. And maybe that's our fault, maybe we need to look at that. But if we cannot properly fund city employees who are leaving left and right, and y'all have to understand, we see that, we see it on the agenda every week. And we have first responders that, that deserve to be paid more. I cannot, in good conscience, give a sixty-six percent raise to one department when there's so many departments that, that need some help.
Uh, I've got one, just one question before y'all move forth with any new language. It says right here, whereas the compensation for those services shall be twenty thousand monthly beginning November twenty-twenty-one through May twenty-twenty-four. So we're gonna have to go back to November twenty-twenty-one and pay the difference?
No.
Well, I mean, that, this, to, to me, this whole thing needs to be rewritten. I mean, there's just, there's just a lot of language in here that, uh, uh.
Maybe, maybe, Brian, not to interrupt you, Charles, is there a reason for that?
Well, there's a reason for liability purposes, is that we had to make it retroactive. Because we do not have a current contract in place with Mancheck. Um, the most recent contract, the twelve-five contract, um, expired on October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And without a contractual relationship with Mancheck, then, um, we're not named as an additional insured on their insurance policy. So if something were to go wrong, if there was some sort of design flaw with a project that Mancheck had been involved in, then of course, we don't have the benefit of Mancheck's insurance. Now, I don't think that's gonna happen, but it's my job to protect the city. We discussed that with Mr. Rochenbach and Mr. Haydel, the head of Mancheck. And they graciously agree that they're not gonna come back and bill retroactively, and I for one, trust them. So, and as far as the, um, I'll speak to one more issue. This, uh, termination, this contract is for consulting services. There is still money in the engineering budget that should the mayor find a qualified candidate. And the, the, the qualifications of the charter are very onerous. Five years in a supervisory capacity, licensed engineers, those guys are making two hundred, you know, two fifty a year plus. And to expect one person to manage a hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of projects is, uh, it's not realistic. So, the reason for the retroactivity is to protect the city. And so there's no gap in the contract. And, uh, and then, should the mayor find a qualified candidate, as a practical matter, with the amount of projects that the city has going on, it would take the city engineer, if one were to be hired, confirmed by the council, you know, months or years to get up to speed with all the details of these projects. The same thing that if you were to go out and do RFPs, request for proposals, to professional engineering firms, again, Mancheck is here. They perform this service, they've been involved with all these ongoing projects. So it was my opinion that in order to continue that level of service, we need to continue with Mancheck. I guess that was a long-winded answer.
Okay, I still have one more question. Back to what I was saying, back when you were a judge, and somebody came in your courtroom in a lawsuit and brought this in stating that monthly beginning November twenty-twenty-one through May twenty-twenty-four, and they weren't getting that money, and it's a, he said, she said, what would you rule on that you would say, hey, you've got this right here, from November twenty-twenty-one through May twenty-twenty-four, you owe them twenty thousand dollars a month?
I would probably rule in Mancheck's favor if they were to do that. But again, there has-
That's what I'm saying.
There has to be a level of trust somewhere.
Well, there, there is no trust when you're coming and dealing with the taxpayers of Bojor City's money. That, that's what everybody is not understanding. It's not my money, it's not the mayor's money, it's not yours, it's nobody's up here. I just want the wording where it says, starting whenever we have a new contract with them, that we will pay them twenty thousand dollars a month, if that's what this council agrees on. But until then, it is twelve thousand five hundred a month, is what I'm, the point I'm trying. I, I'm in construction, I, I know this. I, I, I see these agreements all the time, and there is no way that I would sign off on this. That, that is what I'm trying to get across. I'm, I'm not trying to say that Ben and Mancheck are not worth their money, because they are. I dealt with the old administration that was here and the problems that we had trying to get projects done. They do a fantastic job. And, I, I mean, in my opinion, they're probably worth more money. But I just want the wording right to protect us, the city of Bojor, so we're not in another lawsuit on something as frivolous as some wording in a contract.
And, and I'll let the legal department deal with that, but I'll say publicly, we, we are not going back. We, we have been paid in full for the services we have rendered to date. And it's not our intent to go back. I don't know how else to express it, but we love working for the city of Bojor. We, we don't want to get into, I mean, this is tough. You know, we, we wanna do something that makes sense for the city. But, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's gotta make sense.
I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be, Brian, I, I understand where you're coming from. I agree with Charles, there's gotta be some trust. I'm, I'm no, I'm no Mancheck, the company, uh, adjusted for a very long time, it never had a problem.
And I understand what you're saying, Mr. President, everybody's saying this, but I've never laid eyes on them. I have no idea who Justin Haydel is. I wouldn't know him if he's sitting out there right now. Everybody says, oh, well, I'm met about this, and blah, blah, blah. I haven't met about this. Chris has not met about this, any other councilman up here that have. We have no idea about this. We walk in here, we get the agenda, we walk in here, and this is the dilemma that we're left with. I think there is a lack of communication between other people and the council members. Certain people are privileged to meetings, others are not. That's why we have to sit up here and ask the tough questions. And it's nothing against you, Ben, it's not your fault.
I'm okay. I promise you, I get it.
I don't see any problem with us continuing this for two weeks and getting the wording right.
Justin was up here, you know, he, he does have a meeting with Mancheck, all the mayor, just mayor and his employees. If y'all wanna come, I'm sure Mayor will put, put y'all on the list.
But it's us up here that are making the decisions. So I think if we had a little bit more information about what is being discussed, it would be a whole lot easier for us up here.
Well, see, we can't all go to the meeting, that's the thing.
I understand that.
So we've been sending-
The amount of money they're getting paid, I think they could set up a couple of meetings.
Well, it'd usually have been myself and David, 'cause we've been, we've been involved in this.
You and David, David's right here.
But David quit going, David did quit going for a while, he still hadn't gone. So, if you want, if we wanna invite Brian and-
I'm not wanting to fight.
Oh, I'm not, no.
I'm, I'm, is that what, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I thought you said, do you wanna fight? No, no, I don't wanna fight.
No, I'm saying, we could invite you and Chris to those meetings, you learn a lot. We, this thing here, Ben just went over it, we went over that in that meeting, so, but you can't have everybody there, so.
I, I understand that.
That's why we're here.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Jacob something too. On, on the, uh, language that Mr. Hammond's referred to, is it possible to get the CEO, uh, Mr. Haydel, to put in writing that he would not do, uh, retroactive requests? Since we're talking five months, different, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Is that possible?
It wouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars, it would be the, I, I guess-
If you get twenty thousand per month?
Right, but Mancheck has been billing-
At ninety-five something, yeah, okay.
Correct, after that contract.
So, so would that be a feasible, appropriate thing to, to ask, that he put it in writing that he would not? 'Cause Mr. Rockenbach said that they didn't wanna do that, and he, but he's not the president.
Well, he, he is a rep.
I, I can, if that makes it good, I can definitely get that in writing.
Once you add that to the-
We, 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 you know-
Yeah, once you add that to the mix, that, you know, you put it in writing, that, that's not going to be, uh, something that will, uh, materialize.
Justin would have to do, put it in writing, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, he's the president, it's his company. And just do that.
Not a problem.
Add that to the, uh, to the mix, that may satisfy somebody, I don't know who. But, um, and since I'm talking, I, I did wanna say that my experience also with Mr. Clinton Patrick has been great. He, he's also hands-on and very professional and does a wonderful job for the city. I, I, I have no complaint. You guys bring credibility to the city in that department, and I, I really mean that. So I, I, I feel compelled to support, uh, your continuation with the city, you know, based on that.
And, and I would like to mention, just on behalf of the mayor, you know, it, if, if someone comes up that wants to be his engineer and, and he meets all the muster of the council, it's not our desire to get in the way of that. We want that, that's, I, I, I want that as a Bojor City citizen. So it's, you know, that, that is a desire that we share with the mayor. We've actually helped in that process. But the reality is, is we've been working in this role in the absence of a contract. And y'all all claim to be great business people, that's not good business for the city, and that's not good business for Mancheck. We just are trying to get something in, you know, formalized that, that allows this relationship to continue. Um, we, we, I, I don't know how much I can say or do that shows you just how much we care, just how much we, we want to implement wha- the, the wishes and desires of the administration and the council. And if, if he finds an engineer that, that meets all the qualifications, our objective would be to help and gird up whoever that was and to transition them into that role. It is a monumental task, one that I felt like I had a pretty good understanding of what I was getting myself into. But there is a mountain of weighty decisions that come through that door every second. And it's not something you just wanna, you know, well, let's just, you know, cancel it.
Ben, wasn't you talking to an engineer?
Sir?
Wasn't you talking to an engineer?
Yes.
Possibly wanted to come to work for the city?
Yes.
So he is helping. And Brian, I, listen, you and Chris, I, I'm, I'm not trying to, here to argue with you. You know, sometimes people work, I, I don't, I don't work, I can go to these meetings. I know you work, Chris works, it's hard, but, but somebody's gotta be there, you know? And that's why I go. But you, well, I'm sure the mayor would be glad to put you on the list, and if you can make it, you can, you know?
And, and my final thoughts on this is, again, I do think that, I do think that y'all do a good job. I, I, I want to do my job as a city councilman for the entire city of Bojor and know that we're not entering into a contract, because while I trust you, it, it doesn't hold up in court should you ever change your mind. I, 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 I don't see, I don't, you know, when Mancheck was first given the, the contract back in twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty, you know, it was sold, that it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was Mr. Hudson's, pay and benefit package. And so that, that's, that was the justification for paying Mancheck. If the, if, Mr. Mayor, if you're having trouble hiring someone based on pay, you ought to ask the council if we could appropriate more money on, for pay. 'Cause I, I, I do think ninety thousand dollars is probably pretty low for this job. But you haven't asked us for pay, the first time you asked for pay is for Mancheck. And so, I just think that we ought to have done a little bit of due diligence and see what other options we had in the private sector. And I also don't think it's great either that we let this expire, because it sounds like we had a lot of liability on our hands. And, uh, that's, we're fortunate that nothing happened, and, uh, that shouldn't happen again either, so.
Mayor, I'm gonna give you the last word, if you've got something to say.
I'm good, Bill.
I saw a smile, a smile have it there.
Yeah, right there.
Have your hand raised, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't see you. Come on, come on up, state your name and address, and we'll move on from there.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Williams. David Johnson, four thousand six hundred block, General Yule, Bojor City. Thirty-three years resident in this city, I'm very proud of it. We chose to live here because of our first responders, and, and, uh, we elected some councilmen in the last elections, and we've got a South Bojor webpage that I've promised those people that I would be here when they can't. And I would represent them. We've got over six thousand people on that page, and my duty here is to tell them if I feel like something's going wrong with our tax dollars. I don't have a problem with Mancheck at all. I think, I think him bringing up chlorine in our water and going away from that to bleach is, is a fantastic idea. Chlorine has many, many issues. I think hazmat can respond to that if there are issues as far as breathing and things like that, going into the technology. I think that's a great plan for the city. What I didn't like here today was the bickering and the arguing. What, what I, what I do wanna say for South Bojor is that I do like to say that I represent a lot of people down there. And in that grassroots campaign, I think we, we shook some trees and kicked some bushes, and we quite frankly shocked some people, because we are tired of, here's the deal taken. We are voters, we pay taxes in this city, and we wanna be represented, by golly. We wanna be heard. We don't want a deal that's just passing through.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, is he, is he talking about an item on the agenda?
Yeah, you, you gotta refer to this item.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the, the contract with Mancheck. And, and just, they're, I think they're a fantastic company. I had, I had a great visit with you the other day, and I think what we need to do, in fairness to them, is, is finally set this down, put it in writing, and either make that commitment to two thousand twenty-five, like you said, or cut bait. It's not fair to them to go from day to day any longer. They're, they're doing a good job, so we're either on board or we're not. I, I, I know the average starting salary for, for an engineer, and I say starting salary's a hundred and five, that's the national average. Do you want someone that's willing to work for eighty-five thousand a year, or even a hundred and five? And can one man do the job for this city in the best needs of, of, of us taxpayers? I'd just like to see in two weeks, a contract written in stone, not backdated to November, but moving forward from the seventeenth forward, and, and lock it, lock this in, lock it down. Let's, let's do, let's either, I think, I think it's important for us as a city to have our own engineer local here. Not saying anything against Mancheck. I think, I think they're doing a great job. But let's not, I don't like the idea of hearing someone's word that I talked to someone and, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're gonna hold to this. I, I, I'm sure they will, but I think having a contract written when we're spending our tax dollars is not asking too much. I'd just like to see a resolution on that for the seventeenth and see if we can't lock something down. And if we're gonna do business with these gentlemen, not have them worrying about tomorrow not being here. You know, we need, we need to settle this.
Two things, I'll let you go. We weren't bickering, we was just having a good discussion.
Yes, sir.
You know? Other thing is, they are local boys, like Ben grew up here, Clinton's already, they, they moved to, bought a house and, uh, so they're, they're local. But I just wanted you to know that.
I could settle this quick. I know my answer. Since I've been a councilman, have Mancheck handle this and all that. Ten o'clock at night, we digging hole, they out there with me. We can get them now. I mean, that's how I feel about them.
I think, I think that's fantastic. I had a good conversation with them the other day, and I'm not saying anything bad about the company. I just think with our tax dollars on the line, we need clarification. We need to know where our dollars are going. And not just, here's the deal, it's stamped and done. We just, we need, I think that's why Sobo has really stood up in this last election. We're, we're ready to know. And, and, and by golly, we want to. That's all we're asking, transparency.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So do we have a motion, Phyllis, on the floor?
The motion in second was to introduce the ordinance, and then there was a motion by Mr. Smith to cha- uh, language to end the contract with thirty days' notice if the city decides to do that. There was not a second on that motion.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to, uh-
The motion on the floor at this time is to introduce an ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with Mancheck Consulting Group, Inc., to provide engineering services for the city of Bossier City.
Any questions?
So-
Counsel?
So we need a second on Chris's motion to change the wording?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Well, hasn't, has it passed? Hasn't already died for like a second?
I'll remake the motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Uh, to add language that should the city choose to terminate this contract, they can within thirty days.
Let me, let me say this before we, we vote on that. I, I think in the original three P, there is a clause that the contract can be canceled, and I think this is an amendment to the three P. So I think it's already in the fine print. Is it not, Mr. Attorney? Is it? Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Two things. Like Mr. Darby, brother, Mr. Jacobs, uh, affirmed it. And we still don't have a second, so the motion on the floor is still for the, the original motion. So, uh-
I withdraw the motion.
So, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of the part-time property standards clerk position in the engineering department to a full-time cross-contamination manager in the permits and inspections division, resulting in an increase to the operating budget of forty-two thousand seven hundred forty dollars and eighty-two cents, to be covered by revenues from permit fees. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Rodney, would you, Ben, I'd say anything about that? You just move, you go take over that cross-contamination?
Yes, Mr. Williams. The part-time permits, uh, prop- uh, property standards clerk position will be moved into the permits position to take care of the cross-contamination, um, monitoring and managing that program. Uh, she still will be, that person still will fill in a couple hours a week in her current role.
Because I know they need one over there. And, and you're gonna, you're gonna absorb the budget, the, the cost.
The budget will move her salary that's currently being paid out of engineering will move into the permit budget, and then this additional money is to basically pay her for the remainder of the year plus her benefits.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Rodney, do you oversee the property standards department too?
No, sir.
Okay.
Our departments work side by side.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one GIS coordinator in the engineering department due to a resignation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader due to a resignation in the customer service department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to appoint Angela Williamson, Director of Finance, to the Board of Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority. Appointment effective May sixth, twenty twenty-two, through May fifth, twenty twenty-four. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one officer to sergeant and the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one inspector in the property standards division to fill a vac- a position due to a vacancy. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk and one information technology specialist for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of city water to serve airline, land yap development. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Clinton, is that, is that the development right at the end of Kingston, across the, on the east side of airline?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a full-time clerk typist position due to a termination. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?